Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's for the car wash.
Sorry, what is it?
All right.
Probably, I've got, I've got, I've got minutes to sign. What have I got in here? I've got an agenda.
How are you, Ben?
Fine, thank you.
I've got this, I've only got one, too.
Running, running, I'm going away tomorrow, so running, running.
Probably, probably. Hey, Mr. Buckland. You have another one of these for our fair lady? That's all you got then? This one. What is it? Site development covers GAF. Hell is it though?
It's for the Granite Place, next to Bannical Bills.
What is it?
The Granite, the Granite Place?
Granite Place.
Oh, okay.
All right, okay, all right, we're gonna sit. Gentlemen, wanna sit down or take it out, please?
I got a couple more.
Thank you.
And keep it quiet, please, so we can hear. All right, very well, we on. All right, I want to thank you all for coming in. Gonna thank you all.
Maybe we can share.
All right. Thank you all for coming in and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal tonight, Wednesday, August 11, 2021. It is 6:35 PM and we are at the room 320 at the Multi-Service Center, Wareham, Mary, Wareham, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I wanna call the meeting to order, I'll make a roll call. Our associate member, Mr. Chris Conte, to my far right, Mrs., regular member, Mrs. Devenese, Veronica, our clerk, Jim McCabachi, the far left, regular member, Jake Morrison, associate member, Richard Simple, myself, the chair, Nazir Alkalasi, also present, independent engineer, Mr. Charles Rowley, professional engineer, also present, present, our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, his assistant, Sonia Raposo. And this is it, so that's, that's, that's all for everyone here, the commissioner's not here. Okay, this is it for, for the members. We have some preliminary business to do, we have the minutes for July 28, 2021.
I believe that we also have in my folder to sign the minutes from July 14, which I believe we reviewed electronically and approved, so I move to sign those tonight and at the same time I have reviewed the July 28 minutes, it was a very short meeting, they seem accurate, and I also, at the same time, move to approve those.
Any discussion on the minutes? No discussion? Okay, so can we move a motion to sign the 14?
I move both at the same time.
The July 14 and July 28.
July 14, July 28.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, Jim.
You don't have to say your name.
Okay.
And so, aye.
Aye.
We're off Zoom now.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very well, so minutes are good.
Signed.
All right, just pass the Ken, please. All right. Okay, for the solar panel, the, the solar bylaw committee, the selectmen had asked me to see who would like to attend the committee. I think this is a great program to go forward in the town with the solar because it's solar's going crazy, in my opinion, starting to take up industrial land, good retail area, good residential area, so it's very good move from the selectmen to make a solar committee to discuss that. We need, who's got the time and who would like to go and who would think will be a good asset for that?
Are we look, are we looking for nominations from anybody or from this board?
One, one from each one, one from us. Who's got the time?
I don't have time.
Richard.
How often, how long is it, do you know?
How often do they meet? Just meetings, I'm sure it's at least once a month.
It'll probably be once every few weeks, beginning, and probably take about three or four months to accomplish.
Jimmy, I have another one, that's empty.
You're going for the Springtown meeting with, when you have a bylaw, do you wanna present?
Okay, so you heard it. So who would like to do it? I could be interested in it also, but Veronica, if you want, that's fine, if you have the time.
I, I'd like to. If somebody would do it, I won't.
Good. If nobody else tries to do it, you will.
I would say Chris is good for it. I would say Chris is good for it.
And Chris is, you, you would like to and you're willing.
I would like to do it.
I nominate Chris Conte as the representative of the zoning board of appeals to serve on the solar bylaw committee.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, so Chris is the nominee. Sonia, please let the chairman, Whiteside, know.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you, and what you do, just fill us in every time, we'll go from there.
Sure.
All right, next time, for Swans and Granite, they sent us a plan, if you guys recall that we had approved this, it didn't really need a site plan because it's under 10 parking spaces, but they had one done. I did look at it, I talked to Ken about it, Ken was suggesting a little bit more buffer on Red Brook Road, instead of swale, add some shrubbery, because swales is hard to maintain, not swale, like a, yeah, like a two-foot swale, right, Ken?
That's right.
Yeah, so.
Elevated buffer?
Yeah, but rather see more greenery, like more.
Abrivady or something that provides a screen, a strong screen for the residential units, residential homes on Red Brook Road.
Over here. Look at page.
Boy, I, I contend that anything that gets done there is gonna be improvement over what's there right now.
Page six of eight.
And look at Red Brook Road, they do have some shrubbery.
They are offering something.
BT, what's a BT?
They're offering a good buffer zone here between this and that.
Yeah, this is a good one.
Yeah, cranberry bush.
Cranberry bushes, HHR.
Looks like their commercial operation is gonna be out on Cranberry Highway and this is gonna be mostly storage.
Right, they put the granite.
And a, and a secondary, you know, one way in and one out, they can take advantage of the controlled light off Red Brook. I don't have a problem with what they're showing us, as is.
Are these evergreens, is a daylilies evergreens? It's not. So maybe we suggest they put some abrevadys.
I think that'd be a good idea, abrevady on the Red Brook roadside.
Okay.
Evergreens that would grow to substantiate.
All right, grows better, it's a good fencing.
We want, we want preserve the quality of the residential units over there.
All right, so we'll have them add grasses and abrevadys. Does that sound real good, everybody?
Do we know what these are that we're?
Yeah. The HHR is the daylilies.
Oh, they can.
And these are SGB, these are spirea.
They'd be this big around me.
But most of them, they, they die in the winter.
Okay.
So I would say green, I would say grasses, grasses and abrevadys. Does that sound right? Charlie, any input on that?
How many you gonna put?
You have here, what's, how wide is this, like 200 feet?
Most of what's there is just low stuff except for the petyes, there's one petye on each side of the driveway, so if you're looking for something to block the view.
Yeah.
It's gotta be pretty dense.
I would say staggered, the abrevadys, every four feet, five feet.
Yeah, you don't want them too close that they crowd each other out and die.
They kill each other, yeah.
But, yeah, but what they've got there, you're gonna just see right through it, see over it.
Right. And we don't want that.
Staggered four or five foot separation, I think, would probably be.
Right, staggered every four or five feet, abrevadys, six-four abrevadys, staggered every four or five feet, how's that?
That sounds good.
Okay, let's make a motion.
I'm fine with it the way it is, so I'll let somebody else make the motion.
Okay, can I have a motion if somebody wishes?
Make a motion. Mic on? I make a motion to incorporate some abrevadys along Red Brook Road.
First, you gotta make a motion to accept the plans as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the plans as presented with the addition of abrevadys along Red Brook Road, staggered four and five feet apart.
Very well. Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
At six foot height.
Six foot high.
At six foot height.
Correct.
I'll second that.
All right, second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain.
Aye.
I carry.
Want these back, Ken?
I gotta take these notes once.
Yeah, I'll take them back, recycle them.
We'll sit on them for now, okay.
Why don't you sign one of the copies, so that we have an official copy.
Well, one signed.
Aye, Jim, right? Anywhere, Jimmy? Yeah, somewhere here.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking to see if there was a, I'm just gonna go.
Yeah, I'll put a date here. All right, we'll go for continued public hearing, Frederick Mannix.
They moved that out, I think you have a letter.
Ah, okay. Where's the letter? That's good. All right. When I hear this, Jimmy, read this one here. That's from 22 dash 20, continued public hearing.
So dated August 9th, in address to the zoning board of appeals, we have regarding a request for continuance application for special permit variance in site plan review, assessors map 133 lots 1100A and 1101A, that's at address 238 and 240 Sandwich Road in Wareham. Dear Board, I am requesting a continuance from the August 11th meeting on the above captioned matter due to the fact that I am unable to come to the meeting and represent my client. I respectfully request a new hearing date of August 25, 2021, the decision deadline to be extended until September 25, 2021, to allow for peer review of site plan review, traffic study, and updated site plan with information regarding the septic sewer system. Please direct any and all questions to my attention, very truly yours, Julian A. Morton, Esquire.
All right, very well, so they wanna continue us till the 25th?
So moved.
I have, I have a question.
I'm, I'm not gonna be here.
That's okay.
Okay.
We got a good board now, we got alternates that show up and we alternate them.
They may not go for it.
They may, that, that'll be their option.
So very well.
Continue then if, if we need to.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd prefer that if, that you were here, but I, I don't wanna, I don't want us to be the reason that they're held up.
I get you.
And I have a question on the date, on September, this says October 22nd is the deadline, and she's requesting September?
She's, she's, she's continuing the date out.
What was the September?
In accordance with the amount of, she's asking for two more weeks and she's moving the deadline out two weeks.
But the deadline is October 22nd.
And we're meeting September 25th.
Oh, that's the meeting time. I thought it was August 25th, my bad, okay.
No problem.
All right, so we got a motion to continue until August 25th, 22 dash 20, who made the motion?
I did.
All right, Jim, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so it carries the 25th.
When was it continued to?
You want this for the, um, which one?
Ken.
Yes.
When was it continued to?
August 25th. Continue.
All right, we're gonna start the public hearing, so you guys gonna finish your chit-chatting. 37 dash 21, Hans Westburg, dash variance, dash 19 Wareham Lake Shore Drive, map 120 lot 102 accessory storage structure.
The announcement is in somebody's packet of information. Public hearing notice is attached to somebody's handout.
This one right here? No.
All right, who's got the notice to read it?
Hans Westburg.
Is this the one?
I have it, let's see.
No, I don't wanna read it.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 11th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 37 dash 21 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Hans Westburg of 19 West Wareham Lake Shore Drive, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a 24-foot by 36-foot accessory storage structure in the front yard of the subject property located at 19 Wareham Lake Shore Drive, Wareham, Mass., assessors map 120 lot 102 in the R130 zoning district.
All right, very well, this one, Mr. Simple, we sit on this matter. All right, name and address for the record and let us know what you doing.
Hans Westburg, 19 Wareham Lake Shore Drive, East Wareham, Mass.
If you wanna get closer to this so they pick it up online, yeah.
Hans Westburg, 19 Wareham Lake Shore Drive, East Wareham, Mass.
Okay, ma'am.
I'm Tracy Westburg, same address.
All right, so wanna let us know what you trying to, planning to do?
This isn't it.
We're trying to get a garage built.
And you doing it in front of the house?
Yes, sir, we have a 65-foot wide piece of property. On the opposite, on the backside of the house, which is my front side of the house, is the water. The only place for me to put it is in the front yard.
Okay. All right, because there's no way you could get to the back.
That's correct.
Right.
Also, I went to the site today and there's two neighbors alongside, I believe that's what they're trying to achieve, is what their neighbors have.
There's pictures included in your packet of the two homes that have garages that are already there that are right, butters of myself, but there's five in our development, I think.
All right, I see that.
Excuse me, how far is it off the lot line? I just can't find it in here, the proposed building?
How far is it off what?
Off the, off your lot line?
It's written on there from the engineer.
I don't know why I didn't.
What did the building inspector have to say? I'm, I'm working with the benefit of one of the packets, but I understand the situation.
Okay.
It's a variance. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against this project?
Okay, I'm good.
These are two right next door.
I see none, all right, let's talk.
I don't see any dimensions.
Chris, do you have a question?
No, I have no questions, I'm outside with it.
Veronica.
I don't see how far it is off the lot line anywhere either.
You don't see what?
I, there was a question for how far off the lot line it's placed, and I don't see that in the packet, it's very blurry what, the copy of what we have.
You know how far the front of your garage is gonna be from the street?
25 feet.
25 feet?
Yes.
So the full, a full car, a full car length from the street, you can get a.
Yes, I wanna make sure that I can park my.
Other than a stretched limo, you can get a full car in your driveway without opening the garage door.
My pickup truck fits in there.
If we, okay. I have no questions.
All right, so.
You wanna pass it to the left, anything down that way?
So they need two variances, one for the setback and one to do the accessory structure in front of the house. That's two variances, all right?
What's the setback requirement in Wareham Lake Shores?
50 feet.
It's 50?
That's 100.
100.
This is an R130 design.
Yeah, it's 100.
Oh.
Right, so we, we have two, two variances, apparently the hardship is.
Building inspector didn't pick up on that.
No, but apparently it's the shape of the lot, perfect example for hardship.
Yeah, they got a legitimate hardship.
So I don't see a problem with it, what do you think, Richard?
I don't have any problems with it.
Jake?
No problem.
I make a motion to close the public hearing, public participation portion of this hearing.
Any discussion on that? Hear none, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, oppose, abstain.
I make a motion to grant two variances, one for setback and one for moving the house, putting the garage, front of the garage further forward than the front of the house.
Okay, and I would add, the findings are that it does meet the statute requirement of chapter 40A, section 10, for a variance.
So amended.
So do I have a second on Jim's motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, so 4, 1, 410, Veronica abstain, I carry, you got.
Thank you.
I'll just have one question if, if I might.
Go ahead.
So this process started in March. Is there a reason why we weren't told when we filed for the building permit to begin with, that it wasn't gonna be approved in the three and a half months that it took to get the denial?
Did you, did you file the building permit in March?
Yes, sir, we did.
And how long after they came back and told you you need a?
Three and a half months.
Before you got your letter?
Before we got our letter of denial.
That's too, that's unfortunate, but I don't know, you gotta check with the commissioner because we don't run that department, so we don't know.
The, the department is under a lot of demands and they have a lot of people out and it's supposed to be done in 30 days.
Right, that's what my understanding is, that it's supposed to be 30 days.
Yeah, and unfortunately you timed it at the inappropriate time for getting something through quickly.
Okay, that's my only question and comment.
If it makes you feel better, we got hearings that have been going for a year and a half.
I understand that, but it seems like there should be, if it's, if, if it's a significant.
I think if you put it on Facebook, it'll be resolved instantly.
I, I don't plan on doing that until I get all the approvals, once I get my building idea.
On that, on that subject, through the chair and to our planner, is it, is it a fact that if they're not given a 30-day response, that their application is actually approved by default?
Yeah, essentially so.
So two months ago, you could've just built your garage.
Well, I do have an active permit that they did issue to me and then he told me that it wasn't valid.
I just wanted into the public record that.
Right.
If they don't, if the, if that department doesn't act in a timely manner, you just.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
It has to meet zoning requirements.
Everybody watching tonight knows they can start building stuff without a permit if they don't get a letter within 30 days.
I appreciate your time.
That, just to make it clear, 30 days, if, say that's the case, you get the building permit, doesn't mean you get zoning waivers.
Correct.
So for everybody who's listening, if it passed 30 days, you can just build if you need a variance.
So now, once I, once the 21 days go by, then I have to go back down and get another permit, is it gonna take another three and a half months for me to get this permit?
Hopefully not, hopefully not.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so that's done. First Hartford Realty Group, special permit variance, site plan review, 3,005, 3,013 Cranberry Highway, map 12 lot B and LC1, rain, car wash, motor vehicles.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August 11th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the room 320 of the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 39 dash 21 for a special permit, comma variance and site plan review from the requirements of the following code sections, 320, 763.3, 763.4, 1042.
Me neither.
1061.1.
What's this?
1062.1, 1062.3, and 1520, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to First Hartford Realty Company Corporation, care of Douglas A. Troyer, Esquire of 5859 Willard Street, Suite 440, Quincy, Mass., proposing construction of quote "rain car wash" unquote, at 3005 dash 3013 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass., assessors map 12 lots B and LC1 in the CS zoning district.
All right, very well, this one, Chris Conte will be sitting on that. All right, names and addresses, gentlemen, and let's hear it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and our support. My name is Doug Troyer, I represent the applicant, First Realty Corporation. With me tonight is Sean Kavanoff from Also First Realty. I also have with me, next to me, is Curtis Quitzo from VHB Engineering, and Matt Keely from VHB is our traffic engineer as well. Also in the audience is representatives from our developer, Aria Hassiottis and Len B. Lee.
The denial letter. Can I have mine back?
So you haven't done much research yet, from what I see here, huh?
Yeah, what happened is we're going to show it on.
Can't hear you. He needs you to use the microphone, please.
Sonia was pointing out that the, by using that laptop, it, it doesn't show the, the plans online. If you can go to share screen and share that, the plans you put up, then it'll show on the web as well.
Okay. That screen here.
Right, that'll help, that'll do it.
Is that working?
Yeah, that's, that's online.
Beautiful.
For some reason, the PDF, do you have Adobe on this laptop?
We need to talk about this before we leave.
Open up PDFs.
Yeah, it should open up PDFs.
Yeah, it's not opening it up.
Is it grinding, is it?
It's major or minor modification.
Okay. Okay. I remember seeing that.
Seeing some action. All right.
Let's hear it.
Sir Chair, I'm ready when you are.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Thank you.
Great, well briefly, again, my name is Doug Troyer. We're here tonight looking for a special permit from this board for a motor vehicle service car wash use on the locus. The property's located at 3005 and 3013 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. We're also here tonight in connection with seeking a site plan review from the board to construct the car wash facility on the site. The, you look at the plan that's up here, so basically there's two lots that are at issue in this project. The first lot, this lot one, that I'm hovering over at, at the current time, is owned by Cardemus Company, which currently is developed as a restaurant, I believe everyone knows this as the 99 Restaurant, currently was developed with associated parking, sidewalks, and some utility infrastructure. The 99 has been closed for some time and is kind of a blight building at this point, to which we are looking to bring substantially aesthetically pleasing project to, to the, to the town. The other lot that is at issue is a part of a much larger lot of the Ocean State Job Lot property that has approximately 17 acres. We are actually in a purchase and sell agreement with Ocean State Job Lot to acquire about 30,000 square feet of their 17.18 acre lot, to basically utilize in connection with our project. It's basically this area here.
So, so it's two triangular shaped pieces being merged into a rectangle, is that?
That is correct, that is correct.
And, and is it, the intention, through the, through the chair.
Go ahead.
It's the intention to ultimately merge these two lots into one parcel?
In essence, what we will do, once we get permitting, we'll proceed with an A&R plan to basically combine these lots in order to basically utilize as one.
I saw a lot of talk about one lot having access and the other lot not having access.
Yeah, that was in the peer reviews, draft letter.
I know, I'm getting a little bit ahead of you, but.
We will get to that, and, you know, just to kind of cut that off at the past at this point, we have an access agreement in which we are entering into with Ocean State Job Lot, that will be entered into and be able to be provided. State Joblot, that will be entered into and be able to be provided to this board prior to the closing, but we are currently, uh, we are negotiating an access agreement, and I can show you that plan later as to what that is.
But guess where I'm gray is, what's the holdup on the, on the transfer title?
Well, you want to make sure, it's a development project, so we want to make sure that we're able to be able to do what we're looking to do.
You want permits to build before you buy.
Exactly, so...
So once you get the okey dokey, if you, if in fact you get the okey dokey, then...
That is correct. It's contingent upon us...
Ocean State will get a, have a payday.
That is correct. It's contingent upon us being able to obtain the, the permits from this, uh, on the board.
I just wanted to be clear.
So I'm going to obviously, uh, allow the details to go to my engineering team, but I just want to give you kind of a, a 10,000-foot view, overview of what we're looking to do. Uh, we're looking to raise the existing 99 Restaurant on the 3013 Cranberry Highway property and construct an automatic car wash using about, uh, the use is going to be consisting of about a 6,800 square foot building with one wash tunnel, self-service vacuum bays, ancillary landscaping improvements, and we have parking up to 28 vehicles, which complies with zoning. There's also going to be some stormwater management improvements and utility improvements to support the use of this project. In essence, I'll go through just some real brief renderings, which we did provide in the project. Uh, Rain Car Wash will be the, will be the name and the operator of this car wash. Uh, they are a, um, a modern and new car wash facility that's, that, its business model is designed to deliver the fastest and cleanest car washing experience through a focus on premium locations, such as the location which we're looking at today. They have a rubberized conveyor system for easy, stress-free vehicle loading, available pay by license plate technology, um, and they always have free vacuums for use by the motoring public. As you can see, uh, through these renderings, uh, in essence, what happens is the vehicles come onto the property, they queue up into this area that I'm at right now, and they have, uh, three options. There's a cashier employee that's on site, you have a credit card option, and then for those, uh, who wish to have fast passes, uh, can come in and regular customers basically can do that. Uh, in essence, they have free vacuum bays for, once you exit, uh, you can basically utilize the vacuum bays. Uh, and as you can see, the interior of the tunnel is a much more modern, uh, view than what you typically see, uh, for car washes these days. In essence, we believe that this design and this, this use will be a benefit to the town and is a tremendous improvement to the site than, than what is there today. We, in essence, with regard to zoning, the lot contains approximately 1.8 acres with a total frontage on Cranberry Highway of 350 feet. The proposed development complies with all other zoning dimensional regulations set forth in the bylaw, and the proposed use for motor vehicle service meets the standards for the special permit. I'd like to turn it over to Curtis, uh, from our engineering, and kind of walk you through some of the specifics of the, uh, project plans.
You going to load up that other presentation?
I'm getting there.
If I may, do you have, uh, control of the, sorry, PNS on the other parcel, right, in the packet?
No, we have not provided the PNS agreement. I've provided you with an owner's authorization from both, uh, from the property owners.
Okay, you have authorization from them.
Exactly. I think because we're going through Zoom, it's taken a little bit of time for things to load up, but here we go.
And just because I have, I, I, I don't know if it was my ears or your mask...
Yeah.
But earlier, when you were speaking, I couldn't understand if you said you had free vacuum cleaners for the public to use?
Free.
Or free, free as in they don't cost anything?
That, yes, that is correct.
Anybody driving by, whether they buy a car wash or not, can come in and vacuum all their car?
Well, I think that the, I think it's basically a service that's provided for having a car wash you have free. Um, I wish I could get that for you, but I'm closed off.
That's okay. I'll be anonymous.
Just wanted to make sure I heard the right words.
Yes.
It was free, not free. Okay.
Curtis.
Great, so let's continue. Hi, I'm Curtis Quitzaw. I'm with VHB. I'm a senior project manager in our land development group, and, um, I'm, I'd like to walk you through the site plan, um, this evening. I'm going to start out by just showing you, first of all, in context where the site is, and this is for the benefit of, uh, of the people who might be listening in on Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to roll it? Yes, if I may, I'm just going to roll it on down.
That's fine.
Okay, so this is the, it's the, the, the highlighted yellow area in the middle of the screen. It's in the Joblot Plaza, right at the traffic signal across from Dick's Pond.
If, if you want to point this parcel out to the people of Wareham, just refer to it as the place with the free undercarriage car wash that's currently being corrected.
Free vacuums, that car wash.
No, the undercarriage car wash.
There you go. This is a, this here is a, is a plan that was, uh, part of our submittal. This is the, uh, project location plan. It just shows some of butters. We've got Taco Bell to the east, we've got Eastern Bank, uh, uh, off to the west, and we're, we're right in the front of the, the Joblot Plaza. This is an aerial view of the, uh, the project site itself, to give you a flavor of what it looks like today, if you're not familiar with it. You can see the, um, the 99 building, some, um, some residual parking and landscaping, but the, most of the site is impervious, uh, because it's all paved. This is a view of the site from, uh, Cranberry Highway, looking towards, uh, the 99, which is here. And this plan here is what, um, Mr. Troyer was explaining in terms of the parcelization. The blue line through the middle is the, is the, the line between, that's the existing property boundary as it exists today. The green area is what we hope to consolidate to. That area that's up in blue at the top is a, um, a permanent highway easement on registered property. And we actually, you've already seen a preview of these, so I'll just skip through these kind of quickly. We wanted to make sure that you, you got a sense of what the building looked like before I started talking about the site plan. So I think you've seen these. And we can always come back to them, uh, at any time. This slide here is, is a reminder for me to, to, to mention that, um, you're probably aware that the Cranberry Highway is under construction and is going to be improved. Our site plans, um, that you see that we submitted takes into account what the constructed condition will be, which, which included the introduction of a center median and, um, a U-turn, um, space right, right at the property. Um, our, the property we're talking about is right down over here. Okay, so, uh, on the site plan, first, uh, generally speaking, um, it's, it's fairly clear, I think, that the, the site fronts on, uh, Cranberry Highway, and that we have access to Cranberry Highway, and we'll have access also to that traffic signal and from the plaza behind. Um, the, the building's been situated forward on the site, which puts the parking to the rear and the, the vacuum stations to the rear, so that it's somewhat, um, uh, buffered and obstructed from the public way. The, the state highway has, uh, two driveways planned for the site, one at the location where we're showing a right turn, right, uh, right in, right out driveway configuration, and another one which we, we are planning, uh, to close. Um, we'll be reviewing the geometry of our driveways with DOT in due course. For, so the way the site operates is if you, if you're approaching, we're, we're expecting that most traffic will probably come in through the, um, through the, the, the right in, right out, uh, main driveway. And if you arrive here, you can go straight to the pay stations, which are located over here. As, as it was mentioned, there's three pay stations, a manned, um, a, a self-service, and then a, a kind of like a fast lane option for, uh, certain customers. Um, you'd enter into the tunnel of the, uh, of the car wash on this end, and when you pop out on the, on the far end, when you're, you're done, you can go, you can proceed around and go to the vacuum stations. Um, we have 20 of them down here, you can go there, or you can go to the plaza through either of these driveways that, that go onto the drive aisle of the plaza, or you can head out and, and proceed east on, uh, Cranberry Highway.
It's not sharing?
I'm showing the, the menu and not the, um, not your site plan.
Oh, it's not?
Check the share screen again and see what's, what's showing.
There you go.
There you go. Good, thank you.
Do I have to start?
I'm going to interrupt you again. I'm going to interrupt you again. I'm, I'm looking at the graph, or the picture, and I see a lot of red lines with red arrows. I only see one way in. Are you going to let people come in and out off the plaza, or...
That's my next slide.
Pardon me?
That's my next slide.
Your next slide?
Yeah, I, um, I just wanted...
Okay, so now the arrows go in the other way.
A whole bunch of different colored arrows. Uh, so I, I was focusing here with the, the, what we believe to be will be our primary entrance.
I don't want to let him finish, then.
Okay.
The most frequently used.
So let's hear it. We won't interrupt you.
And then here's what, here's, here's coming from another direction. If you, if you make the left at the signal or the right into the site at the signal, you can come in through either of the back driveways. You can go either directly to the pay stations, or you could go to the vacuum stations first, and then proceed to the pay stations and go through the tunnel. Uh, and then, so basically, the site's very flexible, has all kinds of movements, um, for in and out, uh, circulation. Uh, on this slide, what I wanted to point out, which I've circled, is just sort of, again, some of the functioning of the site and some of the features. Um, there, there'll be a, um, a floor mat washing station at the outside, at the corner, at the middle of the building, centered on, uh, the vacuum cleaner sites. The, the, the site plan incorporates a bailout lane over here, which is a paved lane out for anybody who passes through the, uh, the pay station and for any reason whatsoever chooses not to proceed through the tunnel. Uh, it, it allows them, it allows them to get out, uh, under any circumstances. We've got a, uh, this is the location here of, uh, trash handling, where we'll have a, um, an enclosed dumpster pad and, and landscaping, uh, screening around it. And then up at the site driveway, there'll be a monument sign. And then the, the landscaping, um, component of this thing is really, uh, designed to satisfy the objectives of the, the zoning ordinance, uh, to, and to complement, but not hide the car wash building, because we, we think it's, uh, it's a great-looking building. The, uh, the proposed new trees that are planted are around the exterior, around the perimeter, help frame the, the site, uh, and add to the buffer. We're, we're supplementing some trees that are along our, our sidelines. Um, and then along the front, we've got, um, we've got planting, uh, planting beds of shrubs, mounded shrubs and, and perennials and grasses up against the building. Um, and the, the, the palette of the plants is a mix of native shade and evergreen trees, shrubs and grasses, um, for hardiness, diversity, and, um, visual interest during all seasons. And then, of course, I, I didn't want to show, I could show you utilities, but that's pretty boring, but what I'd like to say about utilities in general is, there's utilities going to this, um, building to service it. There'll be electric, gas, water, sewer. We, um, the, the washing process will recirculate and reuse water, so it's about 50% of water consumption saving. The overall increase to the sewer system is about 3,000 gallons per day, and we've been to the, the sewer department, met with them, and I believe in your packet, you'll see a, um, a letter saying that they accept the, um, the additional flows. So nothing really remarkable to talk about relative to utilities. Um, the location of the recycling tanks will be under the pavement at the location of this, this box here, and the, what, what I'd like to talk about now is a little bit, uh, about the stormwater management and drainage system. The, the building is, will be higher on the site than the existing, um, 99, which is situated up here. Uh, that's in part because of the way we have to grade the site in order to manage stormwater, but also because the, um, the construction of Cranberry Highway is adding a little bit of fill in this area. So our grading will shed the water away from the building to the outside perimeter of the pavements, where it will be collected and directed through openings in the curbs at these red arrows that you see around, and these are all entry points into shallow infiltration bio-retention swells, where the water will be treated and infiltrated, uh, into the ground. The, the, the site today basically has not, does not have these types of controls, and we have to introduce them to satisfy the state standards for stormwater management. There's 10 standards, and we're, um, required to meet them, um, meet some of them, uh, under all circumstances, and some of them we're allowed to meet to the extent practicable. And that, that's the state recognizing that, um, in some instances, uh, you've got constraining, uh, conditions that don't allow you to fully comply, and in, in fact, that's the situation here. We've got great soils, good sands for, um, infiltrating the, the stormwater, uh, but the, the groundwater is relatively high. And so in order to, for us to satisfy, um, certain separation requirements, we, we can't really use traditional catch basins with the deep sumps to do some pre-treatment, so we, we fall a little short on that, but we've done, we believe we've done the best that, that we can do. We understand the peer reviewer will be looking at, at our report, and we anticipate, um, that they will reach the same conclusions we did, and we'll work with them cooperatively to make sure that their comments are addressed. Um, but, uh, the, the, the stormwater system will reduce overall the amount of runoff from that site that you see today, so it's because of the introduction of the infiltration, and because of that, it's going to reduce some of the flooding, uh, frequency that you see, uh, out on Cranberry Highway, which is also being addressed, uh, in large part by the, um, the state's contract. Um, but we're not contributing, um, we're, we're reducing our flows to it, so we're actually helping the situation, so it's a benefit. Um, and with that, I think, uh, I've covered what I needed to say, and I'd like to pass it along to, to Matt to talk about traffic.
Alright, if we may have some questions before you pass to Matt?
Sure.
Now we could ask, I got a, uh, so we're just kind of about the site before we go there. I get a couple of questions. On the stormwater management, you're saying you want to reduce the, the, like, the water runoff to the highway. You have to contain it all. It's, you're not, you can't just reduce it. On the stormwater management, you have to contain it all, you know that.
It is contained, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you guys had a chance to do a perk test at all?
Yeah, we, we, um, we had, uh, we had a geotechnical, um, engineer do borings and some, some testing.
Okay. Another question I want to ask you, this, how many cars you anticipate to get a day there, average, or a year, a month? How do you guys, how do you classify that? Per month, per year, per quarter?
Actually, Mike is going, excuse me.
That's Mike, okay.
Matt is going to get, get into all of that information for you next.
And another thing, uh, did you start a 53G account?
Yes, we have. We already funded it, and it's all been set.
Alright, very good. And any board member would like to ask a question before we go to the detail of the cars on site? Anything? No?
Just that, you'll get around to show the renderings again, so that people online can see them.
Say it again.
The renderings of the elevations of the building.
Yeah, give me a second.
So that people online can see them as well.
Yeah, either one.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Are these renderings in the packet?
Yes, they are.
They are?
They're in, uh, attachment five, uh, to my memorandum.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks. Uh, again, my name is Matt Keely. I'm traffic engineer with VHB. What I'd like to do is just briefly walk you through the process we went through to prepare our... we went through to prepare our traffic study. So the study area for our study included the intersection of Route 6 at the Ocean State Plaza driveway and Route 6 at our proposed site driveway. As part of our existing conditions evaluation, we collected traffic volumes, crash history, and we did capacity analysis at each of those intersections to establish our baseline conditions. As part of our future conditions valuation, we projected future traffic out to 2028, which is a seven-year projection in accordance with MASTOT standards. We used a traffic growth rate of 1% per year, even though traffic isn't really growing at this time. It's just standard to be a little bit conservative and use a background growth rate. We conducted trip generation projections, which I'll get into in a second, and then added those trip generation projections to our no-build traffic lines to establish our build condition. Then we did capacity analysis comparing...
Can we do the share screen again too? It apparently sets up a different page when it gets uploaded.
That's interesting. So it's not going to the screen, it's going to the window. There you go.
Thank you.
Anytime.
So then we do capacity analysis comparing our no-build and build conditions, and that allows us to identify any traffic impacts to operations. So as I mentioned earlier, as far as trip generation goes, typically, it's standard procedure for traffic studies to include projections based on the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual. The ITE Trip Gen Manual is essentially a national database of traffic counts at various land uses. In this case, one of the land uses within the manual is automated car wash. So the column on the left there is the ITE projections. So based on the size of the car wash and the one tunnel, the ITE projections show a total of 78 vehicles during the weekday PM peak hour and 41 vehicles during the Saturday midday peak hour. Now, in consultation with our client, they, through anecdotal information and information they have for other projects, they thought that those numbers should actually be a little bit higher. They thought it should average around 100 vehicles during the peak hours. So just to provide a conservative assessment as part of our study, we went ahead and used those numbers in our traffic study. So again, as I mentioned, we did capacity analysis for existing additions, no-build and build. The results of the analysis showed no drops in intersection level of service, which is how we evaluate the operations. And that just basically indicates that there's a minimal impact associated with the proposed project. One other thing we wanted to touch on was vehicle queuing. We feel that the site plan has adequate vehicle storage. Through information provided by the applicant, you know, they were thinking we should be preparing for an average vehicle queue of about seven vehicles. As you can see with the storage here and the three lanes, this graphic is actually showing 25 vehicle storage. So we just wanted to demonstrate that even with, you know, the highest vehicle queues, we aren't going to be queuing traffic back up onto Route 6, that there's adequate storage to contain them on site. To kind of sum it up and obviously turn it over to questions for the board, it's our position of the property. We'll undergo a significant aesthetic upgrade in building design and improvements, which are beneficial to the town, the surrounding neighborhood, and the community at large. The project will eliminate the current status quo of having a site with a blighted restaurant structure, which has remained vacant for a number of years along an important commercial corridor in the town. The use of the site as an automatic car wash will not have any adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects for either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal and the relation to the site. We're obviously before this board seeking a grant of both the special permit and the site plan, and welcome any questions that the board may have at this time.
All right, very well. This is how kind of we do it here. I guess we gotta go step by step. It seems you have a lot of variances you want to, you want the board to grant.
The good news about that is we actually received the denial letter, and we were able to rectify every single one of those in our submitted plans. There are no variances being requested because we, the plans in which we have submitted to this board and as outlined in my memorandum, we have satisfied all of the areas that the building commissioner has identified.
That's good. Okay, usually, we will run it by the board and with the public and stuff, but usually a project like this, we get as much info as we can. Our engineer will go to work, come back, negotiate with you, come back with us with some things he has a problem. We see some input from the public, we see how it goes. Also, I had a letter from local attorney Bob Perry. He's presenting Mr., he will be appearing on behalf of Mr. Stephen McDonald and others in opposition to the petition or request. Is Mr. Perry here?
I am. I don't think you can see me anymore, but can you hear me now?
He's online.
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom.
Oh, you're here. Hey, counsel, how are you?
That's why we can't see him.
Okay, very well. Okay, so Mr. Perry is present. So we're gonna start with the board questions, and we're gonna start with Mr. Conti.
Excuse me, Bob, can you hear Bob Perry on the video?
If he speaks loudly and you put a microphone near your speaker.
All right.
Okay. All right, let's start with Chris.
I don't have any questions right now. I'm glad to hear that you're not asking for all those variances that the commissioner has listed here on his denial letter. There's a lot to review here. I think I need to look it over more. I don't have any questions right now.
All right, we eventually gonna need a letter from him saying you're not needing any variance, okay? Because we don't have that from him, from the commissioner. All right, so Veronica.
I just need time to review.
Jimmy.
I'm all set.
Right now. Jake?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Rich?
Nothing at this time, sir.
All right, we go on the public. Who's here in favor of this project? Favor, not against. I hear none. Okay, let's go for against. Who's here would like to speak first? I hear none. I guess it's Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, do you hear us?
I want to speak in opposition to this.
Yes. I guess you're the one.
Can I get him back?
If you put your microphone close to the speaker.
Go ahead, I can hear you, Mr. Perry. Bob, you there?
I'm here.
So you're here just... Yes, it's your turn.
We can hear you.
You know, I'm sitting here right now looking at the rendering of this rain cow wash. You know what strikes me is a couple of things they have from my first reading of this package. I feel like I'm in Disney World, the newest attraction. To me, this is a horrible example of an attractive nuisance. We're gonna spend $100 million by the time we're done, at least, to fix up Cranberry Highway, to make it safer for all of us. And this cow wash, looking at it, is going to attract everybody's attention, and that's the intent of attracting everybody's attention. So they see it's there, and hopefully they go and get their cow washed there. It's a danger. We're gonna have more collisions instead of less after completing Cranberry Highway because people are gonna go buy this thing. They're gonna be rubbernecking, and they're gonna have a serious problem. I think in and of itself, the fact that they're drawing attention, this big glass-fronted thing, 150 feet long, parallel to Cranberry Highway, being viewed from Cranberry Highway, in and of itself is violative of items 1, 2, 3, and probably 5 of 1461. Now, I don't know where you stand on variances. I understood to begin with they needed a half a dozen variances. Later on, I understood maybe they were gonna change their project. They didn't need variance, but now I think I'm hearing variances are required. If they need variances for anything, then I don't think you can grant this special permit because I think number 6 in 1461 prohibits that. I think the project has to, in all respects, conform to the zoning bylaws. I don't know if they're seeking variances or not seeking variances. I'm only going by what I heard tonight and what I originally read on this thing. I've read this big package three or four times already. I think this would be a horrible thing to allow, as it is, in that it would cause many, many problems for the community that we are trying to avoid by spending this hundred-plus million dollars on fixing up Cranberry Highway. Right now, we've got a contract out there for, what, about $29 million? Very little doubt at this point that's gonna double. In addition to that, the takings are immense. I don't even know what the total cost of the takings are. But I know that in addition to that, there are numerous cases pending where people are looking to increase the money that's been offered, and I expect it's gonna happen. So we're gonna spend a fortune and then count it all in that area by permitting this gaudy attraction here that is better situated, as I say, down in Disney World than here on Cranberry Highway where it's going through cars. The troubles it's going to cause. When you drive by there and you see these cows going through that glass-fronted cow wash, it's gonna be worse than any possible flashing sign that anybody might want to put up. We don't love flashing signs everywhere.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, I want to interrupt you. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes, we, I didn't hear, I didn't think I heard it right the first time, but we can't have vulgar language in public hearings. If that's gonna continue, I'm gonna have to like shut your microphone off.
Sorry, I didn't really get what you said.
You said twice the F-word. You can't say it publicly, please. Can't be in a public hearing, nor we accept this language. So please watch the language. If that's, if it's gonna continue, that's twice you said it.
I didn't say anything, but if I did, I apologize.
All right, very well, just watch it, please. All right, go ahead, sorry.
Well, this is really upsetting to think of something that garish going on Cranberry Highway to attract the motorist's attention, which is obviously the intent. And it should not be allowed. It's violent of 1461. And that's without considering any variances that might have to be issued. Of course, you issue variances. 1461's out the window. I'm totally in opposition to this, as are all of my clients.
All right, very well. As I said before, we're gonna need a letter from the commissioner showing that the variance has been satisfied, there's no variances needed. Then we'll deal with them after. For right now, we're gonna need strictly with a special permit, we're just gonna take their words for it. And until next hearing, we'll just clarify with the commission that there's no variances needed. Then they have to meet the statute. That being said, anyone in the audience want to speak against this project? Are these gentlemen with you here, all of you? Okay, all right, I just don't want somebody sent for something else here. All right, very good. Okay. That being said, what's the wishes to the board? Charlie, you have any input without? Did you look at the plans? Did you had a chance to look at them?
Well, I've sent my initial report in, which I assume you got a copy of.
Okay.
I saw it.
When, when did you send it?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Within the last 40 hours.
I only got the authorization to go ahead and do things the end of the week. So you've got a partial report. And as I suggested, I will be looking at the plan with respect to the stormwater. Also, I did get the memorandum that suggests that the variances are not needed. So I will take a look at each one of those sections and then compare that to the site plan, and we'll render a report. As I said in my letter, I'll have it ready for the next public hearing, whenever that may be. I do want to make one point with respect to the plan, though. The property is separated into two pieces. One, because it's an existing lot where the old Lobster Bowl or 99 Restaurant is, and that's land-corded property. The OSJ property is not land-corded. So if they separate out a section of the OSJ property and prevent it to the planning board as an A and R plan, I don't believe that the planning board would have any issues with endorsing that plan. But it will not necessarily merge with the land-corded piece because the land court, until you modify the certificate of title through a survey and a change of that plan, will forever and a day exist as a separate lot. So drawing a plan that goes around the whole thing and sort of drawing a dash line through the middle of it really does nothing. I talked about this with the building inspector, and he says that he does not require, nor is he obligated to require that that lot line be merged. It's understood that it will be one parcel for building purposes.
Correct.
But it will have to remain that way, only because half of the property is registered and half isn't. So there'll be a separate certificate of title that will go to the new owner, and there'll be a separate deed which will go to the new owner for the piece they get from OSJ. So don't think that you're gonna see a plan with no line down through the middle. It'll stay there.
I totally understand. It's a perfect example, just like you see lots in Changala where like five lots, they're not really combined, but they're together to make a billable lot. The lines are there, but if the same ownership, it doesn't matter.
That's correct. Just a couple of comments with respect to the plan. Some mention was made of 11-foot driveway called a bailout lane. I don't know whether they've had a chance to go to the fire department and review that, but I don't think 11 feet's gonna be wide enough to satisfy them.
What lane? Which lane?
The bailout lane, it's a narrow 11-foot lane which is on the side, which is parallel with the entrance into the old Walmart site. It may have to be a little bit wider so that they can make the turn. And also, they need to verify the height of clearance of where they go in to pay the fees and so forth, to be sure that if apparatus has to go around that route, they're not gonna hit that. So I'm not sure what the height is, but again, they should verify that.
The bailout lane, so if somebody changed their mind of washing a car so they could leave?
I know, but it may be that the fire department might use that also, and it just may need to be a little wider. I don't think it'll impact things...
What do you suggest, 14 feet, 16? Or you want the fire department make that call?
They should be the ones to look at it. My recommendation would be 15 feet with appropriate radii so that you can get around there without actually running on the grass.
Yep.
The only other thing with respect to the drainage that I will take a look at is that it was mentioned that the recycling tanks are gonna be placed under the pavement and that they've already done testing to show that the groundwater is high. So hopefully, they will have done enough in terms of determining whether or not there is any flotation that will occur to that tank should they empty it, if it happens to be that it's buoyant because of the height of the groundwater. So those calculations perhaps should be done, or they should be checked so that you're not gonna have that tank popping out of the ground and destroying the pavement. And that's all I really can talk to tonight, Mr. Chairman, because I haven't had a chance to review the rest of the plan.
So you're saying if these tanks get emptied, they might float? They might push up?
Absolutely. They could, depending on the size of the tank and the amount of water that comes up along the sides. It could actually make it float.
So the way I've seen this happen, so you probably best bet you gotta design it on the way the bottom concrete part is heavier than the volume.
I'm sure they'll handle it through their civil office. I have no problem with that. I'm just raising the issue and something I'll be looking for.
Yeah, I've seen that. All right. So what do you guys think?
One thing I would like to know is you indicated that a letter had been submitted by Mr. Perry?
It was a, he just emailed it to the board and myself not too long ago.
His letter was simply making sure that he got the opportunity to speak.
Oh, that's fine. In my understanding, he represents Mr. McDonald, who owns the car wash, just down from us, actually. I think that's what you indicated.
We don't know.
And others, okay.
I don't know.
All right, thank you very much.
I do have a couple of questions, if I might.
Go ahead.
The interior of the car wash, well, actually, let me start with what are the operating hours?
Yeah, they're gonna be from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
So will the interior of the car wash be illuminated?
I believe so, yes.
Ronnie, I didn't hear you all. What did you say?
I'm asking about the illumination of the interior of the car wash.
Ah, it's supposed to be illuminated, yeah.
Yes, it will be.
Right. I'm just, want to have an idea of people driving by, how much light is gonna be coming from the car wash itself.
Right, understood, understood.
And then, any of the signs lit?
I don't recall the...
Sign on the building, right?
Probably.
Yeah, we submitted a, there is a sign package that has been submitted as well that specifically identifies the illumination and all of that on those signs.
Yeah.
Is it in here? Okay.
If you don't, I got one right here for you.
Well, I'm sure they're gonna have little signs everywhere, which is, if it's by the book, it's by the book. If it needs a variance, we'll deal with it.
There's one free-standing sign, and then there's two main signs on the building themselves. That's what we have...
Did you check the guideline of our signs? Does it meet the guidelines?
My understanding and what we have submitted complies with chapter, I think, section 11 or chapter 11 of your bylaws.
All right.
Does it conform to the new, the new Article eleven as well?
When did the new article go into effect?
It hasn't gone into effect now, it was voted on by town meeting in April, or, what was that, when was town meeting, May?
Yeah, May.
I haven't heard the attorney general's review of it yet, though, but there was a substantial change in the, in this, in the signed bylaw.
If I could get a copy of that, we'll, between now and the next hearing, basically verify that we are in compliance with that as well, but I wasn't aware that we were, there was a new signed bylaw. But we will take a look at that, if, if I can get a copy of that. I can reach out to your assistant and get a copy, and we'll do that between now and the next hearing.
Building inspectors--
Am I, am I reading this correctly?
I have another question as well.
What's that?
I have another question as well.
Go ahead.
You said that the cars go through at about three minutes each?
I don't know if we said that, that's a bit, that is correct.
So, that, that means in an hour, you get about twenty cars going through the, the car wash, and you can stack twenty-five at the, at the queue.
Yes.
But you said that there's a hundred cars that are possible for, at the peak hour on-site. What happens with the other fifty-five cars? Where do they go?
I wanna let Matt answer that one.
Just to clarify, the hundred is a hundred trips, so it's fifty cars in, fifty cars out.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah, so you worry about the queue at the can?
Yeah, just to make sure that the queue is large enough, and it appears that it would be in that case.
So, this is two tunnels?
One tunnel.
One tunnel, and how many cars can be inside?
I thought they said it could be do--
One behind the other?
It could be three minutes.
No, no, how many together, like, how many it fits the--
One goes at a time, one goes at a time. One, one vehicle at a time.
One car at a time.
I understand this.
Yes.
The tunnel's a hundred thirty-eight feet?
Hundred fifty feet.
So, you could have inside almost six cars, seven cars at least, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
One point I have, that the fire department letter is online now.
I received that before tonight's hearing, and we intend to follow up to have discussions with, in connection with that, with that letter.
Good.
I'd like to speak up to it for a second. Who was the gentleman, said only one car goes through the car wash at a time?
Who's, who's speaking?
Repeat the question.
Hello, who's, who's, we just need name for the record. Name and address for the record.
Excuse me?
Name and address for the record? Who's speaking?
Yeah, this is, this is Steve McDonald.
Yep.
I have several questions.
Your address, please, for the record.
Excuse me?
Your address for the record.
Thirty-eighty-three Cranberry Highway.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. So, there was a gentleman, somebody posed a question about how many cars go through the car wash at one time? And somebody on the representing of Rain said one.
One vehicle, in, in response to whether or not there's multiple lanes--
If I may, if I may, let Mr. McDonald finish, and then you could answer. Go ahead, there's no arguing back and forth to the, to who is speaking. Go ahead, Steve.
There was a point that was made that one car goes through the car wash at a time.
Yep.
That is, that is simply not true.
Okay.
It is, it is, let's state for the record, it's a hundred and fifty feet, the average car length is twenty feet. That means there can be just about eight cars in the car wash at one time, number one. Number two, I think we should see the not, the equipment that is in this car wash, because with a glass building, there's gonna be nothing but flashing lights that are gonna further attract people's attentions. And I don't know if anybody's read the Mass Highway Report that was in this packet here, but the number one cause of accident, not cause, the number one level of accidents on the highway are rear ends. So, I would like to ask how this car wash won't draw our attention, and the lights that are flashing inside of it won't cause attention, and people won't rubberneck and hit one another and cause further rear-end accidents. So, I think we should see a schematical plan of what lights and electrical lights are in this car wash, 'cause I know there's no flashing lights permitted on Cranberry Highway. So, that's one. Two, the traffic report from the engineer states that at peak, there's only fifty cars that go through this car wash in an hour. So, that designates a hundred trips, fifty in, fifty out. However, if you ask the manufacturer how many cars this car wash is built, handled per hour, they will tell you it's a hundred and fifty to two hundred cars an hour. That's industry fact. They have twenty-six vacuums, or was it twenty?
Twenty.
It was twenty stations, they have minimum parking. Are you actually gonna say that there's only fifty trips that are in and out in peak? And oh, by the way, if anybody's been past the car wash that was down, that's down on Cranberry Highway, they'll tell you on Saturday, it's the busiest day of the week, but this doesn't show it's the busiest day of the week, it shows the weekday is. So, I would tell you that most of the information in here is not actually factual. It's taken out of books as opposed to factual studies that have been commissioned. In addition to that, there's a traffic light two hundred feet or so up. How is it that all these cars are gonna exit when people are stopping at a light and speeding up? And there's gonna be that kind of traffic? Is that gonna cause more accidents?
Okay, you're good, Mr. McDonald, sir.
And I'd like to say this as well. I think it was Ken Buckland made a joke that Dick's Pond provides a free undercarriage wash when it rains out.
That was Jim's joke.
The engineer's here today, I believe the engineer's name was Curtis, says that it will help with some of the stormwater, but it won't deteriorate the, the flooding. And this property was abandoned by Ninety-Nine because of the flooding. My guess is with the oil, with the gas and the oil traps, grease traps, there may be some environmental hazardous waste on this property from all the flooding that stayed in place, and now you're gonna have more flooding. Maybe it'll be reduced, sounds like it will. Sounds like there's also gonna be quite a bit of gravel filled here to bring the lot up to a level, but what's happening on an environmental basis to Dick's Pond?
All right, very well, Mr. McDonald, now, sir, you could, you have your floor.
I don't think any of those studies have been done.
Let the gentleman answers, and we get back to you.
Well, they should answer for this town, not just for me.
Yeah, correct, he's gonna answer the question.
My last point, Mr. Nazee.
All right.
Which is, twenty-some odd years ago, there was a glass building just like this in the old Walmart parking lot, as you may all recall. And everybody talked about how much of an eyesore it was. Are we actually going to have a billionaire build yet another building in this town that's a glass building that doesn't confine with the architectural norms of the community?
All right, you all set, Mr. McDonald? Okay, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, just real briefly, we've submitted our reports. We are very interested in, in speaking with the town's peer review engineer to discuss the traffic concerns, to discuss the stormwater concerns, to discuss, to discuss the project concerns. I respect Mr. McDonald's statements, but I do want it to be known that this is a, this is a competitor who owns Soft Touch, which is down the road from us. If he has reports and expert reports and things on those lines, that's his position. We submitted ours, you, we've, the town has its own engineer that is going to be reviewing those, and we are more than happy to discuss any of those, all of those concerns that the experts have basically talked about, and I think you're, thank you for your time.
Steve, Mr. McDonald, sir, 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 you have to have the floor to speak, you can't just jump in. You give me a minute, I'll give you the floor. Charlie, is this gonna go to conservation? I'm, I'm very sure, right?
Yes, the entire project is in a flood zone, AE flood zone.
Okay, and what's the elevation there, eleven, twelve?
Fourteen.
Do you, they have fourteen?
That's, that's what the minimum flood elevation is for that mapped area. I don't know what the grade of the ground is yet.
I think they're grade eleven or twelve.
They still, they still have to go there because it's mapped that way.
Right.
And I'll be taking a look at the grading that they propose. I think it was Mr. Quetzal maybe, he may have suggested that the Mass Highway is raising the grade in this area. I don't know how much that is. If he knows, maybe he'd be willing to share it. We'll see whether or not it oughta, it sheds any light on it after I've had a chance to review it, but I haven't studied that at all yet.
I think that did raise it a little bit, they're gonna have to for the water. Yes, sir.
In response to that, we actually have had discussions with the ComCom Department, and the agent indicated to us that we only need to file a notice of intent and a request for--
We may not need to file a notice of intent.
You know better than I do.
Yeah, we, this is Kirk Quetzal. We've met with the, or we had discussions with the ComCom agent. He recommended that we, we file like an RDA, a request for determination of applicability. We may not need to--
I think you're gonna need a notice of intent, there's no way RDA will fly.
Yeah, we may not be able to, we may not need to file a full notice of intent.
If you're in the flood zone, I think you'll have to, but he, that's his call, I'm not gonna, that's--
Except that, except that it's--
The property is in the flood zone, too.
Except that it's, it's coastal flooding, it's--
Mr. Perry, let me, you'll have, I'll, I'll give you the mic, just give me a minute. We let Mr. Pichet decide this, this is his board, and I mean, that's his call, not ours anyway. So, Mr. Perry, go ahead, what do you like to say? Mr. Perry?
Yes, I, I just said whether they have to go before conservation depends on two things. One, they don't, that's the wetlands act, obviously, because they're not within a hundred feet of the pond. However, that property may or may not be within the flood zone, and David wasn't sure of that. Matter of fact, that was a question we were reserving for Mr. Rowley.
All right, Mr. McDonald, do you wanna say something while I'm looking at these plans?
Mr. Chairman, I checked on that with the FEMA flood maps that are online with the town.
Yeah.
There's no question about what they're in, the flood zone of AE fourteen.
Okay, and you guys got, like, you, you proposed grades like eleven, twelve, so you definitely gonna have to file, whether RDA or notice of intent, I don't know, that's, that's Mr. Pichet's call. All right, so, Mr. McDonald, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I'm curious how it's not in a flood zone, and we all know when it rains or snow melts, both the Ninety-Nine Restaurant and the highway are imperviously flooded right to the pond. So, if it's not in a flood zone, then it would seem that somebody would actually need to look at it and maybe reclassify it, because as, as somebody stated, and as we all have had, free undercarriage washes, I thought that was actually quite quaint and quite funny, but an actual true statement. And the fact that we would spend as much money on this highway to redo it and to continue that issue is, is quite problematic.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. McDonald?
Yes?
Mr. McDonald, perhaps you weren't listening when the engineer stated that this is, in fact, is in the flood zone. So, what's your point?
Oh, I didn't hear that, sir.
It's very important to listen before you speak.
Yeah, that's true. All right, Steve, let's, it is in the flood zone, they're gonna have to go to conservation, let conservation do their work, we do our thing. As I understand, the highway did, Mr. Sample knows somebody, they did raise it a foot over there, they raised the highway a foot. So, we all, we all know there's a flooding issue, hopefully, the state with all the money they spent, they addressed this issue. And hopefully, with your plans, you will contain all your water with the stormwater management, I think a hundred years, or was it designed for a hundred?
You have to contain everything, the two and the ten, and then you cannot exceed what normally comes off the lot for the hundred-year storm. And you cannot impact properties off-site by the hundred-year storm.
Okay.
So, if they're saying they contain it, they're that much better off, but again, I have to look at it.
Right, exactly. So, this we're gonna have to sort out as we go.
Nazee, may I ask another question, please?
Yeah, please address chairman, because we, I hate to say this, I, I don't need friends. So, just address me as the chair, please.
That would be fine, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Four other questions. One, one was stated by the county, by the Rain Attorney, which is, I am a, I am a business owner that's competitive to this. And yet, well, I may be a business owner that is competitive to this. You know, the issues here are vastly different than competitive issues. I have built two car washes in this town, and I will remind you that one of those has gone out of business because there wasn't enough business to support it, which is now a used car dealership. And my question is, when they say that this is a great benefit to the town, is it a great benefit for the town? Is this proper town planning to have a car wash a mile from a car wash? People may eat three-plus times a day, and you can have a lot of fast foods, but if we're actually planning, are we, are we taking one eyesore and creating yet another? Is this, is this good planning from that standpoint, I ask? And I guess it's a bit of a rhetorical question, but I think the point is well-taken.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald. It, it is a good point. As Mr. McDonald said, I know restaurant people would try different food, go eat, but why, I mean, it is a free business country, you do what you want, but why would you wanna do it over there? For instance, why didn't you pick West Wayham? You probably can pick up a better business. I mean, we do in town as well, I mean, as a, as a responsibility of a board, as a special permit granting, we do have also to do a findings that you're not detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't know if you call detrimental, who knows, maybe put the other gentleman out of business or not, but I don't know, it's the case, we'll, we'll see with the legality of it. However, why would you, it's a curiosity, I mean, you do, you could do it next door to him, that's your business, but why would you wanna do it there, not somewhere else? I mean, was there a, like, strategy? You think the market can handle it? And honestly and truly, so personally, I think one of you is gonna go out of business because they, that much, unless you guys know something we don't know, but it's, because that gentleman, he was, he was right, there was another car wash that closed down, down the street, right next to you, across from Sunoco. Just curiosity, why, why you think that location's so important? Do you have strategy, statistics? What do you think?
Give me a second.
You don't have to tell us if you don't wanna, just curious.
One of the reasons is the, the amount of traffic that drives by that side. There's a high volume, what is the, the volume in the streets, the existing volume?
I don't know what to come to that.
It's, it's substantial, though, and that's one of the reasons the, the drive-by traffic that could pull in and use the facility.
All right, sir, do you name an address?
Yes, my name is Ari Hasiotis. I know that's a mouthful. I am the principal for this project. I reside in the Framingham area, but I'm the developer of this project. And as to your question, Mr. Chairman, around why this location, my background is in retail, and I operated hundreds of retail stores quite successfully across the country, and I look at the car wash business as one that's underserved for consumers. So, typically, the facilities are poorly maintained, dirty, not well-invested, the service is poor, the speed of the transaction is poor, the quality of the wash is poor, and often, the facilities are poorly located. In this instance, we have all of the opposites of those. We have a very attractive facility, very well-lit facility, with completely free vacuums for the motor and public, whether they choose to wash their vehicle or not. The wash process is infinitely faster, the wash quality infinitely better, the service level will be infinitely better. This will be manned, I should say staffed, by several folks to make sure the facility's kept clean and neat. At the end of the day, this is a prime retail corridor, it's on the out parcel of a grocery store and some other retailers, as you know. And this particular part of the Cranberry Highway, we're, we're choosing to locate on a far corner of a light, provides for great ingress and egress into the site. The, the site is very visible from both directions, accessible from both directions, and, and we think we will play well off of the traffic, all the quick-serve restaurants and other retail in the area, which is what we really try to target when we look to locate a car wash, where people are able to conveniently access it on their way to or from whatever else they may be doing on a given day.
Good, good explanation, thank you, it was just curious question.
You're welcome.
And before you leave, does any board wanna ask the gentleman? I, I'm assuming you're the owner, you said.
That is correct.
So would somebody like to ask him a question?
I would just like to make a comment because I am in agreement with the Chairman and Mr. McDonald in terms of location. But I understand your explanation of the reason that you're locating it there. But I think we also, as a board, have to consider the benefit to that location for what's existing and what may become of what's existing when this type of a project comes in. In terms of putting somebody else or another building or location, one or the other may go out of business. I, I re-West Wareham, I don't know if you've looked, but there's nothing. So East Wareham has a car wash there that actually, I believe, is pretty well-maintained, clean, well-serviced. It's very popular in town. The other side of town has nothing, and neither, I think the closest decent car wash is probably 20 minutes in every direction from West Wareham. And then you have this other car wash that where you wanna be, that's just right down the road. So that's just my thought on that and this whole project. Aside from that, I do have some other questions, but I just wanted to make a comment about that.
Thank you.
Just keep in mind, everybody, it's, it's a free enterprise, so he could pick and go whatever he wishes. We, you cannot be prejudiced against what, what he does it. It was just a suggestion, so. I mean, the man knows what he's doing, and if that's what he wants to do, it's what he wants to do, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I just address one other question that was raised around lighting? And I can tell you that this model, that, and the elevations that we've shown is, I can't take credit for having invented it. It's, it's becoming quite popular throughout the country as really setting a new standard for car wash. And this is in reference to an acrylic roof and some glass along Cranbury Highway. It doesn't create problems anywhere it's located. And in fact, the general configuration of this car wash in towns throughout America where they're installed is in the configuration that we're showing with the pay lanes parallel to the street, the building parallel to the street. In this case, it also happens to create a really good ingress and egress and good circulation in, in the site. So I, I did wanna make that point. I mean, there will be some LED lighting. It points down onto the vehicle. It does not point out and project out, out of the wash bay onto the street or onto adjacent properties. So these are downward-facing LEDs that are on the arches of each of the respective components of the, of the wash equipment. And, and so I, I did wanna make that clear. And then I, I also just briefly wanted to mention on the, and I'm sure Kurt will, will address this in due course, but the, we did do a pretty detailed analysis of, of the fire apparatus circulation. And, and I believe, Kurt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are compliant with the requirements under the, I think it's NFP, in terms of providing access around the main portions of the building and appropriate clearances. But we can provide anything. I know we submitted some information to the fire department in response to their requests, questions about that matter.
Correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to point a few of those things out. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We have one question before you go, sir.
Please.
You seem very well-versed on your product knowledge, just 90% of the job, so congratulations.
Thank you.
But my question is, I've heard a lot of comment this evening regarding flashing lights. And, you know, I've had this image painted of Back to the Future and the DeLorean going through the car wash and the lights flashing, and maybe it'll come out with wheels that turn up. I'm not sure. But what's the purpose of all the flashing lights in a car wash, if there are any?
I, it's a good question. I think it's frankly just creating an experience for the, the guest, as we call them, or the, the consumer, where they're, they're going through the different processes in the tunnel. You could be getting the initial soak or the soap and then the wax and the ceramic treatment and so on. And then the drying where we use sometimes, again, this downward-facing LED lighting just to, just to delineate different parts of the wash and kinda, now you're going through X, and now you're going through Y, and now you're going through Z.
Is this flashing at the car or out the, out the glass window?
No, downward, so down.
Is it gonna be so clean and so shiny that it's gonna reflect off it and cause all these accidents that I'm hearing about?
Well, I think they will be clean and shiny.
For the public driving down the highway a little bit.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may speak.
Thank you.
So I have a little experience at these car washes. I don't know if it's the same exact brand as this, but down south, there's many, many car washes just like this. Pretty much at every, every grocery store, right off the corner. Now they're building very similar car washes. And I've had nothing but great experiences using them. And it, it's all the same exact stuff that they have on paper right now. And there's, you go down south and there's hundreds and hundreds of them, and there's no issues at all. And they even have, the most of them are at four-way intersections, leaving, say, a Stop &amp; Shop or a Publix or, or something like that. And they're, they, they work out really nice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hey, Chad, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak again? This is Steve McDonald.
Yeah, one second, Mr. McDonald. Let me, from Mr. Sample, a board member.
And I'd just like to put in that I think we authorized a Noria that went in over in West Wareham, which is less than a half a mile away from another Noria. So, I mean, when it comes to this retail or selling anything, I think it's dog-eat-dog world out there. That's just my opinion.
That's what I said. It's free enterprise. All right, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
We'll look at the most trap.
Mr. McDonald, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to, to address this respect for a competition, it's fine. This isn't, this isn't necessarily about that. This is about town planning. Can I build a water, would you commission me and allow me to build a water park across from a water park? We have one. So that's one. Two, when I built my second car wash, the conservation department made me put in, I wanna say it cost me 12 years ago $40,000 to put in a recharge trench, and I had to take all the rainwater. And I'm wondering why this one doesn't have to do the same. And as it relates to the flashing lights, you do that to draw attention. They will radiate out of the building. And I'm not sure who said they've had great experiences in Florida, and they are a great experience. However, I also tried to put up a sign that was a flashing light and told I couldn't do that on Cranbury Highway. So I'm just trying to make sure that if you wanna have a competitive set, that the competition has to deal with exactly what the present competition or the present establishment has to deal with. So I think it's, it's only good townkeeping. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Well, like I said, I'm sure conservation will have the piece at it. So I'm sure they have all the inputs and stuff. Once they go to, to conservation, they're gonna have to because they're in the flood zone. And the other way on lighting.
Ken looks like he's got caught in the headlights or something.
In the lighting aspect of it, we will visit more and more and look at it more and more. This isn't gonna happen in a couple of meetings, I'm sure, so we'll check it out and we'll see what Mr. Rowley comes back with. Go ahead, Ken. What do you got?
I, I just wanted to get a zoning compliance review of the parking that's taken away from the Joblot parking lot and how that complies to this, on the special permit for, that was issued for the Joblot facility. And what, what the, the difference would be in reciprocal parking or whatever is allowed across the, the lot lines.
Our understanding for Melton State Joblot is that they have significant excess parking, and the area to which they are giving to us will not impact any restrictions, any conditions, any stipulations that are on their existing special permits and the requirement for parking for them. This is excess, substantially excess parking space in an area to which they were able to basically provide to us in this. And that is our understanding. I have.
I, I assumed that was the case, but I just wanted it confirmed and.
That's, but we could definitely take a look at that. But my understanding, are you asking us to determine what the number of parking is that is required for Melton State Joblot? And then basically provide you what is left after we take the 54 spaces in which we're looking to take?
Yes, so it is in conformance with the permits that have been granted to the, to the Joblot site.
Yeah, the thing is, is they are the seller. It, basically, it's their permits to which they could be impacted. I will take a look at that information for you, but at the end of the day, that is the seller's issue by doing it to us. And our understanding and our analysis has basically shown us that they have excessive. But again, I will take a look at those numbers and I will take a look at those numbers.
If I may, Charlie, don't the seller of, is it still the rescue who owns it? They sold it. Whoever it is.
Ocean State Joblot.
Ocean State, if, if, if they get a special permit approved from Planning Board for a certain amount of parking, and they cut a piece, don't they have to go back to Planning Board, make sure they still comply? Or whoever granted that permit back then, I don't know who, that's been there.
There were, the zoning board and the planning board both issued variances and special permits for the property.
Okay.
At various times. One of my comments in my letter was that you need to have some verification that they've looked at those to see what impacts there might be on cutting this piece off. I don't know what the impacts would be, and my, my first thought would be, what suggested to you is that it might be impacting Ocean State Joblot, not necessarily the piece that they want to sell. But it goes, the special permit or the variance runs with the land. So whether they give it to someone else or not, it still might be valid for the piece that they want to convey. But I think it is essential that those documents be looked at to see what restrictions, reservations, provisions were put in there.
I, I think you should ask the seller. I'm sure he has.
We've had those conversations.
Right, when he had his permit, it shows how many parking he's needed and how many he provided. If that satisfies the need and the board.
My understanding is those conversations have been conducted, and I will, I will obtain information.
So this is very important that we will revisit after because.
Absolutely.
If he cuts himself short with parking, very easy, whoever granted that permit can put a cease and desist or call him back for a special, for a public hearing to, to make his building smaller or whatever, or find out, find more parking. All right. They got a big homework to do, so go ahead.
I just have one question regarding the size of your sign that's on the building. I believe our bylaw permits a 40-square-foot sign, and you have 70 square feet on your signs that are attached to your building. Your freestanding is 90, 120 is allowed, so that looks okay. But the ones that are attached to the building, I don't believe meet our bylaw, but Mr. Buckland, if you could.
The pylon, you mean?
Excuse me?
The freestanding sign?
No, the signs that are attached to the building.
Okay, all right. I think they go according to the size of the building.
That's correct. It's by the linear length, the number of feet of the building itself that allows a, a certain size signage.
Can you direct me to that, Ken?
It's on page 92 of the, of the zoning bylaws.
It's 20% of the lengths.
Under section 1138.
What page is it?
92.
There's a formula for it, so I'm sure.
And the area of the sign goes up to a maximum of 75 square feet.
So if it's, yeah, if it's over 100 square feet, the length of the building, maximum 75 square feet.
Isn't that something that the building commissioner looks at when he puts up with his letter? And that wouldn't be, that be on the list of variances necessary?
Right, so we don't have to wait. We'll wait what he says.
Okay, I'm just gonna make some clarification.
Out of curiosity, that's your answer. All right, good. What else would you like to send these gentlemen with? Charlie, any comments for these gentlemen? Do you wanna exchange numbers maybe and emails, hopefully?
I, I've got documentation that I can email back and forth. Just a, just a comment, that back when we had a pre-filing meeting, this goes back a number of months, I brought up the color as an issue, that it looked pretty, pretty vivid, if there was any way to tone that down a little bit. So it didn't stand out and look like a, a gigantic flash in the sky as opposed to something that was a little more subdued. So I had asked at that time that they take a look at the bylaw in terms of the colors and the materials and so forth, but I don't see much of a change from when they first presented it, so.
Is it in our bylaw? It is, so please visit that.
Anything in commercial zones, it requires certain, certain amenities and certain types of finishes and that type of thing. So I encourage the board to look at that.
Okay, Ken, wanna take this, remind me next time or take some notes on that, so we look at it with the colors?
Yeah.
All right, and please, sir, if you visit that bylaw for the colors, make sure you're complying with the bylaw.
We believe we are in full compliance with the bylaw. I understand that there may be personal views on certain colors and things along those lines, but we are confident that we are in compliance with the bylaw. But again, I, I appreciate the comments, and we are always willing to explore those.
All right, very well. Anything else, gentlemen? Ma'am?
No, not at this time.
All right, so when would you like to come back? Next time is August 25th.
I think August 25th is.
Does that give Charlie enough time?
Charlie, is there enough time, August 25th?
I put in my letter, I'd have my report done in time for the meeting on the 25th.
I'd like to have an opportunity to maybe have a, a seat up beforehand, so we may be able to have some conversations. Would it be, is that enough time for you to get something to us a few days?
I'll get it as soon as I can.
No, I understand. I just wanna make sure we have enough time to maybe have a conversation about some of your stuffs.
We can have a conversation about it at any time. There may not be enough time to get that done, and you turn something around if I find something you need to change. But it'll certainly be done in time and, and for.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna be here on the 25th. I just looked at my schedule, and I don't think you are either, correct?
Then I suggest we push it out four weeks instead of two weeks. I know that puts you guys, but, and that gives you time to go back. If, if, if the engineer can come up with a response and through the, through the planning department, get it to you, maybe you guys can communicate between each other, so when you do come back in four weeks instead of two weeks.
So you guys will only have three or four members on the 25th? It won't be a full?
We are a five-board member. You need four out of five.
Exactly.
If we four, you have, you have, you have the right to say I don't wanna.
And both of you are gone on the 25th? Okay.
Right, so I think it's the best we go to September.
I apologize.
So me too. I, I've said that back in May. I'm leaving, so.
You know?
September 8th.
September 8th, so is that good, September 8th?
That's acceptable. Yes, thank you.
All right, and how we doing in timing for, for, we have time for them, right?
Yes, we do.
We good?
We're good.
All right, so. Anything else before we get a motion to continue?
Just one question, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
It's been mentioned two or three times about flashing lights. I wonder if we could have a, a detailed description, not at this time, but maybe the next time, about those flashing lights? Some people are susceptible to seizures and convulsions based on flashing lights. And if they're vivid, you know, and, and they're the type that would do that, I think we need to be concerned about that.
That's already on my list to provide additional information on.
I mean, I think it would be a problem if you're flashing light directed to the highway. I think it would be a problem. So that's, you have to address that, yeah. All right, anything else?
Make a motion that this meeting be continued for four weeks, which will bring us to September 25th?
8th.
September 8th, pardon me.
September 8th, I have a motion to continue 31-21 by Jim till September 8th. Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. So we see you, gentlemen, on September 8th.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Oh, thank you.
All right, before, thank you. Before we go, we have on Nature's Medicine, and they wanted to continue to August 11th. Forget, this is on today. Nature Medicine, they wanna change the hours.
For some reason, I believe this came in front of us.
Last week, right?
Last, last week, but the selectmen, I thought, approved it.
For the change of hours? So what they need us? For the change of hours? So what do they need us for?
The special permit that was issued. The special permit had hours that was issued in there.
So did, did we, did we, we did not, we discussed it?
It was not, it was continued for tonight.
It was continued to tonight. So we need to make, we need to make a decision tonight. I get it. So we discussed this before. The question is, I believe, I speak kind of freely, but I believe the question is um, is it a minor modification or is it a major modification? If this board determines that this is a minor modification, then we can say, yeah, sure. But if we decide that it's a major modification, it needs to come back formally in front of this board as a major modification.
All right, so what the board thinks? What do you guys think?
What, what are the hours, sir?
I think it's minor.
I mean, it's not, it's not an incredible amount of increase in hours, right?
The hours are 8 to 10, Sunday 10 to 8, but I don't know what they were.
Seven to seven.
They were 7 to 7?
Yes.
So they want them 8 to 10? Because people go out late more to get high.
Two hours then?
They, they want to open a little later because the people.
A little late.
They're gonna open an hour later and close two hours later.
Where is it located?
At the Jordan Plaza, my ex-building.
It's not open yet.
Right, right.
Would that be the only thing open at 10 o'clock in that area, at that time of night, or just the restaurants?
Allah, yeah, that's right.
Oh, okay.
Allahs, Lindsay's.
Yeah, yeah. Allahs closes at 9 now. I'm really, it's not a pain in the butt. Gotta go there early.
Well, I guess my comment on extending the hours is that it's, it's kind of spreads out the um, the, the traffic flow instead of everybody coming at, at one time. People, um, I mean, the, the once, once was a time in my lifetime when bars were open till 1 o'clock in the morning and some had 2 o'clock licenses and restaurants stopped serving at 11 o'clock at night. Now the town seems to close down at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night. You can't find anything open, but that doesn't mean we all have to follow that suit. They want to be open till 10. It's not a problem with me.
What's, what's everybody's thought on, on um, the rest of the plaza, I'm assuming is closed at what time? I mean, because you have other businesses that are gonna be shut down and what?
They all shut down. After 5, they all gone.
After 5, they're all gone? So we don't?
I don't see, I, I don't see a problem.
In terms of security, there's no issue?
They have their own, they have their own, they sell the marijuana thing, so they have security.
I know, that's why I'm concerned about the security, yeah.
Yeah, they have security, they have all these things, so I'm sure. I don't see a problem myself, so I don't know about you guys. Jake, you okay with that? Richard?
I make a motion.
I'm fine with it, sir.
I make a motion that should be considered a minor modification.
And we approve the new hours?
Well, we gotta decide whether it's minor or major first.
Yeah, do I have a second on minor modification?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 I favor the motion that we approve the hours as requested.
Do I have a second on, approve the hours?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Deny.
Okay, so we're 4, 1, 0. Okay, so it carries. Thank you, and then uh,
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like, I have some questions first.
Whoop, Melton's drawn.
Veronica, if I may, did you say uh, it's a minor or major modification?
I denied that it's a minor modification.
So you think it's a major?
I do.
Okay, I didn't hear that. All right, so also on major, Veronica, is it no? For a while, I saw there was major myself, but it's okay, it's too late now. All right, any other business you guys like to discuss?
Yes.
What would you like?
So in reading the size of the signs.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like some clarification because according to how I'm reading this bylaw, section 115.4 states that no sign shall be larger than 40 square feet except for a mall sign or shopping center sign or freestanding sign, which shall be no larger than 120 square feet. And then section 1126 for freestanding size regulations. However, section 1126 also talks about um, sign sizes for walls and roofs, but it would be my interpretation based on this that it's talking about sign sizes for mall signs or shopping center signs, not for this type of a building. So the, the, the wall or roof signage calculated would be calculating for the mall or for a shopping center, and that would be that limitation for those types of buildings. But not necessarily, I think that this freestanding building is actually, does have a limit of 40 square feet.
Maximum 40, you're saying?
Yes, I, that's I, that's how I'm interpreting what's, what's written.
Okay, we'll, we'll have David check onto that. The commissioner. Also, there's a new uh, sign by law, you said, or parking by law, Ken?
Sign by law.
So maybe it's more, it's easier or tougher, so we don't know, so, but we'll let, we'll make sure the commissioner checks on it and he'll interpret it better for us, okay?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? He announced, wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
A motion to adjourn by Jim, second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, of course, abstain with adjourn. Thank you, thanks, Bob.